Welcome to the March thirteenth, twenty twenty five time. Lake Zoners on board of appeals moving. Draw please rise and decide if you're of allegiance.
What do we need to say? States of America. To the Republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Michael, would you call the roll please? Rail Zuber?
Yeah.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Well.
We're going.
The lights here.
Hey, we're well.
Yeah.
And I'm Jim Matthew Pouch here. On his evening agenda, we have several items. We have a request for rehearing from Mr. Giuliano for area variance two zero two four A V dash eight, which was denied in November of twenty twenty four. We have new variance application two zero two five A V dash two Jeffrey McLaughlin fifteen Mountain View Road for a boundary line adjustment. New area variance application two zero two five A V dash one known engineering for Howard and Wendy Schaefer, proposing construction of a new home, requesting a front yard setback, bearings and a height variance for the structure. Uh, area variance two zero two four A V dash one, uh, Mr. Talaga has informed the zoning office that he's withdrawing his variance request, but we need to close the public hearing. The acceptance minutes for the January meeting and new and old business. And unless anyone has anything else, I would like to get into the, uh, Giuliano request. Um, this is, uh, something I've never dealt with before. Um, you remember, is everyone familiar with this, with the Giuliano request and the denial? Okay. So, uh, Mr. Giuliano has written a letter to the zoning board, Karen, uh, requesting a rehearing on area variance two zero two four A V dash eight that was denied. Uh, I will read you regulations on a rehearing. A motion for the zoning board of appeals. Well, that's perfect.
This.
You want me to start over?
No.
Please allow now, please. Yeah.
Yes.
You know, all working.
I shouldn't say mine.
For six to long. Sorry.
That's okay. We didn't really get very far, so. Uh, rehearing, a motion for the zoning board appeals to hold a rehearing to review any order decision or determination of the zoning board of appeals. Not previously reheard may be made by any member of the zoning board of appeals. A unanimous vote of all members of the zoning board of appeal that then present is required for such a rehearing to occur. Such rehearing is subject to the same notice provisions as an original hearing. Upon such hearing, the zoning board of appeals may reverse, modify, or know its original order, decision or determination upon unanimous vote of all members then present, providing the zoning board of appeals finds that the rights of persons acting with good faith and reliance upon the reheard order, decision, or determination will not be prejudiced thereby. So, as I read this, uh, it says a motion for the zoning board of appeals to behold a rehearing to review any order, uh, maybe made by any member of the zoning board of appeals. Uh, I have not heard any of you request a rehearing for Mr. Giuliano's variance. Mr. Giuliano is requesting that one of us request a rehearing. Um, that's where we currently stand. I see no reason to hold a rehearing. I, I believe that, that our process was followed through as intended and his area variance was denied. But Mr. Giuliano has requested that a member of the board request a rehearing. Uh, I have spoken to council. Council says Mr. Giuliano can request whatever he wants. So Mr. Giuliano has requested a rehearing. So that being said, is there a member of the board who wants to make a motion to request a rehearing for this area variance?
Can I just mention a few things I read through in this before we do that?
Sure.
Okay. Did you guys read through this letter you wrote to us?
Yes, we've had it.
I'll go anything that says, and I'm not for him. I'm just a couple of key things. He wants to present a more precise and comprehensive plan.
Um,
I mean, well, look at it. If the guy wants to give us more detail and try again, um, maybe we can offer him suggestions and changes. It's just right now, it kind of feels like a dead spot. Like a lingering, what is it? Just like a standing violation right now?
It is a standing violation right now. He's received a violation letter.
Well, at the, at the meeting at which the application was denied, the applicant was given the opportunity to provide additional information and the board voted against postponing the decision on the process until the additional was version was raised made. So, uh, Mr. Giuliano has been given the opportunity to provide additional information. Uh, Mr. Giuliano's statements here regarding, uh, the drainage, uh, and that we were concerned about the drainage effect. Certainly.
Really making a motion?
Right. We're, I'm just in discussion right.
Sure. Motion before discussion.
Oh, what?
Are you making a motion or no? Cause then.
I want to. Oh, I wanted to kind of listen to the rest of the board's opinions on this before I made a motion.
I don't think we should discuss it further without a motion for.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Wait a second.
Hold second. Has to be unanimous.
Parker, roll.
Uh, motion for a rehearing on two zero two four A V dash eight.
Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Well.
Like, well, no. Can we do that?
Yes.
Matthew Pouch.
No.
It's not unanimous. Motion not carried.
Okay.
So that let's see, too bad. I have just one question. Can he refile the same variance again? No.
Okay.
If he makes changes, could he, like, if he makes combinations and changes, could he then apply again? Just can't be the same application.
So like if he were asking for like forty foot and he came back and asked for like thirty eight foot, that would, that be a different variance.
Correct.
Correct.
Hmm.
Next item on the agenda is new area variance application two zero two five A V dash two Jeffrey McLaughlin fifteen Mountain View Road. Mr. McLaughlin wants to do a boundary line adjustment with a neighboring property owner. And as long as an existing non-conforming lot, he's looking to gain property from the boundary line adjustment, but even after the adjustment is approved, he will not have a conforming lot. He is asking to have existing non-conforming lot declared a legal not conforming lot. So it can move ahead with the boundary line adjustment. As everyone seen the information that Karen has sent out for this. What's? That, yes, from everyone. Yes.
Thank you.
This is seeking relief from Article Five dimensional requirements in a handle commercial zone, ten thousand square foot is required for single family dwelling. And residential rural zone, three acres minimum required for single family dwelling. Owners attempting to do a boundary line adjustment because it is a non-performing lot in the residential rural portion and will still be a non-conforming lot after the proposed adjustment. They need to attain a variance to legalize the non-performing size of the lot. This is seeker exempt. Uh, county planning says there is no impact, correct Karen?
Correct. I received that back and Warren County Plan Department finds that the proposed action has no significant inter-community or county-wide impact.
And, uh, there is a APA non-jurisdictional letter in the file. Um, so I'd like to go over the application. Um, you are acting as. Okay, uh, Mary, please help me on this. You're acting as representative, as an agent. So is Mr. McLaughlin or Ms. Dara the applicant?
It's still the owner of the property.
Okay.
He is just allowing her to speak on his behalf here.
Well, the first, our very first question is having been to the property recently, um, no one is living at fifteen Mountain View Road, Lake Zoners, New York. So where, what is the legal address of the applicant?
Um, I believe it's on the application. Uh, yeah, it's, um, current residence is, um, but oh, we use that the application, that's why. Um, he lives in New York City, um, but this is a, a family-owned residence himself is, well, his and his late wife. Um, but he is up here, you know, every chance that he can. He's technically a seasonal resident, but he, uh, spends as much time as possible in Lake Zoners.
I, I understand all that, but the illegal address of Jeffrey McLaughlin is not fifteen Mountain View Road, Lake Zoners, New York, which is what's on this document.
Okay.
Assuming it's three thirty West twenty eighth Street apartment twenty one J, New York, New York.
Yes, you got it.
It is acceptable to you for me to correct the address on this application.
Absolutely.
At the back. So I would be.
Yeah. My shit's attorney.
I wish it, my shit were that easy.
Going to the history of the property. Two eight five point two zero dash one dash third of McLaughlin parcel, parcel, original lot size with point two six acres in twenty twenty one, add point two one acres to the handle commercial zone, lot line adjustment with parcel two eight five dash two dash twenty five for total zero point four seven acres, contains one residence. Two eight five point dash two dash twenty four, so a real parcel, so a real phone since nineteen sixty five, current owners had property conveyed in twenty twenty four. Contains one residence area equals twenty two point six acres. Description of the proposed action. This is legalized and not controlling lot, so the boundary line adjustment to add zero point six six acres parcel two eight five point two zero dash one dash three zero McLaughlin from parcel two eight five dash two dash twenty four, so well and take plates. Um, I will ask the question at this point in time and, uh, just for clarification, but I'm having a difficult time understanding the rationale behind a boundary line adjustment to legalize the non-conforming lot. The boundary line adjustment was, will not legalize the non-conforming lot. The minimum lot size in that area is, this is RU is three acres. Um, this will add one six six acres, which will still make it less than uh, just a little over one acre and the minimum requirement is three acres. So I'm having a hard time understanding the rationale behind the request for the back door a variance to make, to legalize this as a non-performing lot. I don't understand the point.
The, the term legalize was something that I was, um, was suggested to be, be added by Karen. Um, you know, essentially there's, there's a couple of things that are going on here and everything that, that the parties are trying to do is actually represented on this map. There's also a proposed three point two acre lot that's shown to the uh, west of the, the portion that they're requesting to add. Um, the point six six acres is a landing between those, those pieces. This is, this three acre lot is something that's conforming, that's was, is going to go to the planning board after this. Issue was that this point six six acres doesn't make it conforming. However, um, the one part of the rationale of this is to create more of a buffer between the existing residents at fifteen Mountain View uh, and the proposed residence is going to be on the three acre lot. If you, if you essentially remove that or, or eliminated that point six six acres, this three acre lot would be much closer to the existing house. This house is on a tiny lot as it is, but they were trying to create an area of buffer around this residence from the new residential lot that would be directly to the west of it.
I've seen the drawings and doesn't the buffer exist with the proposal without the boundary line adjustment?
That lot, this point six six acres would not be a conforming lot on its own.
No, no, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, is that the buffer between the proposed three point two acre lot and the existing lot is there whether the line, whether the, whether the variance is granted to allow that property to be transferred to the, to, to the McLaughlin lot or not. Based on what you're showing, the, the location of a, of the additional lot next door. Whether or not this parcel in between is transferred to McLaughlin.
Hmm.
Will have no impact on the buffer, the buffering. There's the existing house. There's a, that's a lot next door. This is the area that's being proposed to be transferred.
Right.
Yeah. That area exists whether it's transferred or not. Yeah.
That.
I understand, I understand what you're trying to do. I'm just trying to, to understand the rationale behind it.
I'm not, I'm not sure I understand what you mean. The thirty acre, or excuse me, the thirty foot wide strip that is being proposed to be added to the west side of, of his property. That would be part of the three acre lot, meaning he could have a neighbor that would own right up to just off the corner of his deck without adding the thirty foot strip that would, you know, essentially create some breathing room between the corner of his home and the neighbor's property.
Not if the house is, is placed as shown on, on the drawing.
Right. It's not necessarily just the house though, because you have ownership, you have fences, you have children, you have neighbors, you have dogs. He just wants to have a little bit more land between himself and the next door neighbor.
Okay. Like to move into the application unless anyone has questions. The variance standards, question number one, describe how the question variance will not alter the character of the larger neighborhood or impact adjacent properties. The response is it will make parcel two eight five point two zero dash one dash three zero closer to the minimum acreage for RRU. No new construction is planned. Yeah, we are, we're here to review the application for completeness, to accept the application. Uh, may the question is answered, rail?
Questions answered.
Urges.
Well, questions answered.
Mike.
Questions answered.
Kayla.
Questions answered.
Question number two, describe what alternatives have been explored to achieve the solution other than variance. Response is the obstacle in creating a larger lot is the cost of the property being transferred. Property owner is not willing to sell the two point seven four acre for the same price as the points zero point six six acres. Does not surprise me, but.
Yeah.
Right. When I came back to him, I explained that, you know, what they're trying to do is going to require a variance or he needs to buy a lot more land. He says like, there's no way I can afford that.
Question is answered, rail?
Questions answered.
Questions answered.
Questions answered.
Questions answered.
Question number three, explain whether this requested variance is substantial. Response is no, this is going to increase the size of the lot from point two six acres in RU, RU to point nine two acres in RRU. Of course, I, I thought in twenty, according to the history of the property, the, the original parcel was point two six in twenty twenty one, point two one acres was added to make it point four seven. And now this is says it's, it's going to increase the lot size from point two six to point nine two.
That's in the RU portion of it.
Okay. Thank you.
Property is, yeah, it's split zones. So if you're not the part that's in.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Uh, questions answered, rail?
Questions answered.
Purchase?
Questions answered.
Mike?
Questions answered.
Kayla?
Questions answered.
Question number four, describe how the requested variance will not have an adverse impact on physical and environmental conditions in the neighborhood. Response is we are increasing the size of an undersized lot. No new construction is planned. Question is answered.
Questions answered.
Questions answered.
Questions answered.
Questions answered.
Question number five, describe how the requested variance is not a self-created difficulty. Also, two eight five point two zero dash one dash three zero is already a non-conforming lot. The value of the land being purchased is not within their control. I'm not really sure I understand the answer, but hey, this question is answered.
Questions answered.
Questions answered.
Questions answered.
Questions answered.
I believe we have all the required paperwork here. Anyone else have any questions?
Yeah.
I make a motion to accept the application for area variance two zero two five A V dash two as complete.
I'll second. Mike?
Yep.
All right. Motion to accept two zero two five A V dash two as complete. All in favor?
All right.
Impose? Motion, Karen.
Make a motion to establish a public hearing for, for area variance two zero two five A V dash two for April tenth at seven oh five P M.
I'll second. Mike again?
Yep.
All right. Motion to establish a public hearing for two zero two five A V dash two on April tenth at seven oh five. All in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Motion, Karen.
Thanks. Next on the agenda is new area experience, new area variance application two zero two five A V dash one known engineering for Howard and Wendy Schaefer. Twelve North Avenue, the Schaefer is a proposed construction of a new home that they are posting a front yard setback of fifty feet from the required sixty feet and a height variance for a structure that is forty eight feet, eight inches, maximum allowed is thirty eight feet. Good evening. Uh, this is seeker exempt. Refer to county planning is not required. A permit from the APA is required and that is in process. So I would like to get into the application. So first of all, as with the previous application, the owner is listed as Howard and Wendy Schaefer, twelve North Avenue, Lake Zoners, New York. Twelve North Avenue, as you know, is a vacant lot.
Uh, I'll concur because, um, I'm actually filling in for Kevin. Um, he's the architect of record on this project. Um, yeah, so I hope to answer your questions. Unfortunately, I don't know his address, um, at this time.
What was your name, sir?
Uh, Stephen Elheim.
Stephen Elheim?
Yes, Nolan Engineering.
Hey, Matt, it's on, uh, second page on the schedule, like, second page from the back. Down at the bottom. Four Keen Steed Drives.
I'll see if I can write it down.
Yeah.
So long.
That can't be. Has to be resident.
He was.
He was what?
A resident.
Oh, you think he moved? Oh.
I think this guy lives downtown. Does first aid for me, isn't he?
Pardon?
Isn't he the guy that lives downtown did first aid, does first aid in CPR, Mr. Schaefer?
No, you're thinking this.
You think we know this brother, Mike?
Okay, Mike, just see what is down.
So we don't know what Mr. Schaefer's legal address is.
I do not. I'm sorry. That's, I, I understand you're filling in, but.
So we need to have that clarified. Correct?
We need to have that clarified. Uh, there are a couple of other things in here. Um, the uh, the requirements for area variance, uh, and I, I didn't see it unless it's been added to it is a drawing showing the adjacent properties. Uh, I don't see that in this packet. The information which has been provided um, I'm confused because the drawings we've been provided is for a single story home.
Correct.
Basically with a, with, uh, an exposed basement underneath.
Uh, that is also correct.
So how does this structure become forty eight feet tall?
So, um, based on my discussion with Kevin and looking at the site plan, um, the, the slope, um, appears to drop off quite significantly, I believe, like thirty feet from the garage towards the, um, the lowest point where it's taken from. So it is a single story, but at the garage level, the, the garage slab is at six hundred and seventy eight feet. Um, and the house level is six hundred and eighty, but, uh, the grade line actually drops off and I believe the lowest point here is six hundred and fifty one, um, feet. So even though it's a single level, um, due to the slope of the grade, it, it's actually, um, forty eight and a half feet.
So is the intention then that the entire uh, left and right elevation, or excuse me, the, uh?
Entire visible ridge line. I mean.
No, no, go ahead.
No, you, I think you're trying to say the, the entire visible ridge line is what the highest part we're gonna see.
Oh, no, because, because this peak is higher than it's, than, than, than the ridge line.
Okay.
Um, so it is forty eight feet, eight inches from the, from the peak to the lowest point of the exposed elevation on the lake side.
That is correct.
Okay.
And, um, just to clarify, um, from the, uh, the people, um, you know, Kevin has pointed out, it's fourteen point six six feet high from, from the road. So it's actually from the road, it's only fourteen and a half feet tall.
Now, you have the, uh, the plan view showing the, the, uh, the deck.
Yes, you should have it. Okay, on the survey. Right. Then I'll this, this is this, but on the survey.
Okay, this one.
No, you should have another page. Why don't you have a? No, that's that. It'd be small. We just look at it and open it up.
I do.
Now my name's up.
Hopefully, we'll find out. The the plan view for the deck. Does not agree. With the elevational view. For the deck. I'm trying to tell, we probably don't know that, but the at the. Uh, the elevate, the front elevation shows the deck is going. From the side to side.
Okay.
For us the entire lakefront.
Hmm.
And. The outline of the deck. Uh, stopped short. Of both sides by uh. A substantial distance.
So I believe that the the um elevations that you have in front of you are um from the modular builder.
Yes.
So they haven't been modified, that the deck is actually not supplied by the um modular builder, that's something that we would actually design, and. Kevin, based on Kevin's site plan, this is the footprint that we would be using.
So the drawings was your provided are not actually representative of what you are requesting to build?
Well, the house is, so the deck is considered um at this point.
Built by others.
Correct, you know, it's it it could be, you know, uh. Uh, say he couldn't afford the the deck at this time, it could be like a phase two, and then he would come back for that, but um. The the preliminary drawings um to establish, you know, the the setback for the for the house and the and the height, um. I I believe that the the site plan outline is going to supersede what the modular builders have supplied for the deck.
The the house is right on the stepback line, the only way to put a deck.
Really, you need to maybe look at the bigger map.
Yeah.
Because the lines don't show up good on that.
Maybe you'll have big ones. I've got it right there.
I've got.
I was looking at this. My hair's long about a half inch a minute here. I think my mouth is talking. So this one is no good?
Yeah, it's good, it's just that, well, I'll show you what I'm talking about.
Yeah, and.
If you look at these at the one you've got. And then we go to the act. Where is your? Where is this one? Oh, so you do have that.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm bombing off people next.
That's right, if you look. At this. Line. This is the shape of that deck and porch. But you can't see it on the copied smaller one. It's too faint. Yeah.
I traced it out.
Okay, you traced it out then.
Okay.
But that's what he's talking about, the the drawing for the house. Shows the deck running here to here with a porch in the middle. But but that's not what is represented here as what is planned.
Okay. Before we can do anything with it, we don't even have the address. Of the guy.
No.
So I mean, we we, technically, I mean, can we even?
And you can go through it and tell him exactly what he's going to need.
Yeah, okay.
Um. We can certainly do that, and I would certainly be willing to do that, I don't want to waste your time for coming here.
So you can note an address on it, that's one.
Okay, like the address.
I can write on this if you have a pen.
Yeah, the writers I gave you.
I imagine this is a, it's a rental, it's a rental model. I think hers is free, mine's a rental.
Yeah, okay.
I used to sit on the uh planning board in in Southlands Falls, so this, I wouldn't say this is my first rodeo, but it still seems that way, doesn't it?
So.
Matt, can I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
You talked about you, you don't have a drawing showing adjacent properties, is that something we can generate off the G I S for them?
It is not something we should be generating as a requirement.
They can generate it after.
Yes, they can generate. Absolutely.
Didn't he want an accurate? Lot plan depicting where the porch would actually go?
I would like to see accurate drawings of of the. Of where the where the the deck is going, yes, I I I I would like to see all the drawings accurate. Hmm. As to what is being proposed to be built there, because you're asking for a pretty substantial variance.
I I agree, the the. I'm hoping that there's a way that we cannot incur that cost to the owner to basically purchase, so he's he's bought the modular home plans. Um, and he hasn't moved forward with like the the deck design part portion of this, we designed the uh the basement uh for it, basically. Uh, but for the for the deck, that would be um. An additional cost, and if the variances uh get denied for the for the relief. He would be into the cost of that deck without being able to build a house. If you under, can you follow me?
I do understand.
Okay, but it's not your problem?
It is not my problem.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm going back to the beginning here, but.
I'm sorry.
Uh, the address being shown online is also Slingerland, just giving me a lot of um anxiety right now. Where was he living when he was sitting on the planning board here?
And it says it was born in nineteen ninety seven.
He does own. Other property here in town, and I think that he. Claims to stay in Lake Luzerne for a certain number of nights per year. That's all I, that's all I can say to you on that. He owns other property here in town.
Now, we should move on into uh.
No, I'm gonna shut up, it's fine. Blood pressure's like.
Now, on these plans, can can they? Would it be acceptable to the board? To take like this elevation? That came with the modular. And just without giving you a full set of construction drawings. Actually try to. Show how the lay of the land actually is by making the. Show the rendition of what they're proposing for a deck where it but. I don't know, I'm just, I'm trying to think of a way to not have it cost them a ton of money before it's approved, the my other issue with it is. Once the variance process is complete, and if you approve the variance. If they do not. Um, the height variance, if if the project is not done within one year. Of the granting of the variance, that variance is is known void, according to our zoning ordinance. So my question is. Is the porch and the depth that they are proposing? Not the one shown here, but the one they're proposing, is the peak of that? Porch portion going to be any higher than any of the peaks? Shown on the house drawing?
No.
Okay.
No.
But the fall of the land is not accurate on this, correct?
Correct on the um modular plans, that is correct.
Okay. Now, I didn't, I get no say in in this, but I'm just trying to clarify.
I appreciate the clarification.
Thank you. I want to continue to go through the application, just so we can. See what we can resolve. Uh, in the attachment to the uh, since all the responses to the questions are in attachment. Uh, the description of the proposed action is the intention of the property owner, Howard and Wendy Schaefer, to construct a single family residence on the property at twelve North Avenue of Lake Luzerne, New York. Proposed residence would be a single story house with an elevated basement below due to the steep slope of the site. House got a footprint of two thousand six hundred and seventy eight square feet, the existing property site has a steep slope down to the shoreline of Lake Luzerne. The steep grade change creates a situation in which the location at the overall height of the structures required to be taken. Advised for a height of forty eight feet, eight inches tall, even the proposed house somewhere measures fourteen feet, eight inches in height from the street edge. Therefore, we are applying for a leave for the maximum height zoning requirement of thirty eight feet, provided for this difference in height. Ten foot, eight inch variance request. There's also a small portion of the proposed garage that will approach on the zoning limit in front setback of sixty feet. Front corner of the garage sits at fifty feet setback, we feel that relief of ten feet from the corner approach from the garage. Is a minimal ask considering the distance from road setbacks of existence surrounding properties, houses and structures. Any questions on a proposed action? Various questions, question number one, describe how the requested variance will not alter the character of the larger neighborhood or impact adjacent properties. Responses, we do not believe this requested area variance will alter the character of the larger neighborhood or have an impact on adjacent properties. Outside of the house was, don't let exceed that of the three neighboring homes, relax right and across the street. And if proposed setback of the corners portion of the structure garage will not be closer to the street and some surrounding houses to structures. The owner intends to build and keep this property in the same character of the surrounding neighborhood. And complement the adjacent home designs, they will also work to maintain as many mature trees as possible. Uh. The height you're referring to. Is the. Overall height of the Schaefer proposal or the height of the building? On the roadside?
The uh relief requested is the um. Forty eight, the eight from the lowest point of the grade to the highest point of the house.
I'm just asking that this this statement is the proposed height of the house will not exceed that of the three neighboring homes to the left, right and across the street. So are you, are we talking about? Height at grade on the roadside, are we talking about the oh the total height of the structure?
I believe the total height of the structures.
Thank you. Any questions on this, uh question one, any comments on response to question one?
Questions answered.
Questions.
Thanks. Question number two, describe alternatives and explore to achieve a solution other than a variance. Responses due to this size and property line ba- boundaries, the owner is not able to achieve this solution with another approach. The owners are proposing to construct a single story two bedroom house on the site and don't believe. They're going out of their way to build a house of unreasonable size and shape. It is a small site that requires some relief from zone, from current zoning requirements in order to build a family dwelling. Therefore, the reverse is to establish relief is required match building height and a small variance of ten feet for portion of the garage. Has been established as a way to move forward to achieve the design proposal. Um, I will tell you. That uh the question is answered. I will also state. Your benefit that I. No alternatives have been explored to achieve a problem solution other than the variance.
I believe that is correct.
But I answered it.
Huh?
What he answered, yeah, I I he answered the question, I agree that.
I agree. Anyone have any questions on on question number two? Any other comments on question number two? Question number three, explain what this range request, this requested variance is substantial. Responses, we now feel the requested variance is substantial due to the building property lots. Which can be hard to provide for standing square footage, the heights is proposed without requirement area variance due to the established building setbacks and health requirements. The health requirement is hard to meet due to the steep slope of the site. Like mentioned previously, the height of the house from the street edge is only fourteen feet, eight inches high. Compared to the back of the house because of the drop in the site grade, therefore, we are hoping this is an acceptable request. Uh. Question is answered, real?
Questions answered.
Questions answered.
Questions answered.
Questions answered.
Question number four, I describe how the requested variance will not have an adverse impact on physical and environmental conditions in the neighborhood. As noted previously, the owner intends to build and keep this property in the same characters of the surrounding neighborhood. Move the style shape of the proposed house is keeping within the style of the existing surrounding airport homes. The serial facade of the house will co- increase carbon P and provide a fresh updated look for the immediate surrounding properties. Overall, we believe this will have a positive effect on the neighborhood, the owner will also work to maintain as many mature trees as possible. I have no comments, real?
Question.
Yeah, no comments, questions answered.
Questions answered.
Questions answered.
Question number five, describe how the requested variance is not a self-created difficulty? We will describe it as a self-created difficulty? Nice to hear that every once in a while. As mentioned previously, the height requirement is hard to meet due to the steep slope of the site, the height of the house from the street edge is only fourteen feet, eight inches high. And twenty one feet, eight inches high at the front of the garage compared to the forty eight feet, eight inch height at the back of the house due to the draft is in the site grade.
Questions answered.
Real?
Questions answered.
Questions answered, sorry.
Mike's answer.
Questions answered.
So. What we need from you. Is an actual address for the property owner.
The legal address.
Legal address, yes, the legal address for the property owner. Uh, drawings which depict what is actually happening with accurate elevations. Uh, based on that. I cannot make a motion to accept this application as complete.
Would I ever ask you to define, you mentioned a plot plan and adjacent properties, that was said. About ten to get also.
And that also, yes, thank you. Showing the adjacent properties, so and the G I S is sufficient for that, but it's not in the packet, okay?
And that's in include the porch as well, right?
The deck and the porch.
The actual deck, yeah.
Yeah, that's one of the things I wanted to clarify, are you looking just for the outline and the elevations to reflect that? Or are you actually looking for a the deck plan to be included in this?
I think we should be able to see what they want to do all the way around the house because they are asking for a relief. Setback. So.
I would love to see.
See what's going on all the way around the house.
Plan for the actual deck which is intended builds.
Okay.
And just to clarify, uh again, on the elevations, are you looking for an accurate grading uh line on the elevations as well?
Accurate everything.
Yes, accurate everything.
Okay. Wanted to clarify. Okay.
We have to make something saying this is not complete, Mary? Okay.
So when you get that information back to Karen. She can forward it to me, and then we can set a new date.
Sounds good to me. Thank you very much for your.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, so we didn't accept it as complete, so the next meeting is April tenth. And all of the paperwork needs to be into my office by noon, April one.
Uh, you said noon?
Noon.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I might need left month.
Next on the agenda is area variance two zero two four A B dash one. Uh, Mr. Chalaga has informed the zoning office, he is withdrawing his variance request to eighty three Family Drive. Uh, the public hearing had been left open. At Mr. Chalaga's request. As he was pursuing. What his alternatives would be, apparently, his alternative is to withdraw the application, that being said. I will close the public hearing for area variance two zero two four A B dash one. I take care of it, right? Don't need to take any further action if it's drawn as application, okay?
Application that consists.
All righty. Have everyone seen the January minutes provided by? Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Yes.
Anyone have any questions or comments?
No.
Motion approved the January minutes.
On second.
On favor? On favor?
I, I.
Oppose? No business. I don't have any. Mary?
Okay.
Karen?
Um I don't have any other than, as we had said in an email, that we're not going to print the minutes any longer because they're so long. Okay, so please review them ahead of time.
Okay.
And if you find something that you want changed, please let us know ahead of time.
I'll take that back, I did, I got an email uh just recently from uh Warren County. Uh on a seminar that I'm hosting sometime in April on waterfront development. Um. I will. I will forward that to anyone who's interested, it's like at four o'clock in the afternoon.
In which part of April?
Yeah, best practices for shoreline and stream corridor development. Doesn't cost anything. I I I intend to go, but. Uh anybody else have anything?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.